Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and please ask you to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Stover, roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Present.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Ciorcino?
Yep.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here. Thank you. Tonight, we're recognizing several outstanding students with exceptional athletic achievements. In addition, we're honoring several Parkway employees. We're very pleased they could join us at the board meeting tonight. First, I'd like to call on Mr. Desi Kirchhafer, Deputy Superintendent, and Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, to the podium, please.
Okay, good evening, President Feldman, board members, Dr. Marty and Secretary Stover this evening, thank you. It's an honor to be here this evening to present some of our finest employees who have received some distinguished and special awards during the school year. When I call your name, I'd ask our award recipients and honorees this evening to join us at the podium. So first, I'd like to introduce Winifred Crock. Ms. Crock is the orchestra teacher at Central High. She was named the St. Louis Symphony, or named the St. Louis Symphony 2013 Educator of the Year. Ms. Crock was also selected as a winner of the Singer Family Prize for Excellence in Secondary School Teaching by the University of Rochester in New York. She will receive $3,000 and Central High will be awarded $2,500. Thank you and congratulations.
Kathy Wallace.
I am pleased to introduce Kathy Wallace, nurse from Central Middle. Kathy won the Excellence in Nursing Award in the School Nursing category as part of the Fourth Annual Competition sponsored by St. Louis Magazine and Chamberlain College of Nursing. Congratulations, Kathy.
Chad Little, could you please join us? Chad is the theater teacher at North High. He received the International Thespian Society's Inspirational Theater Educator Award. The award is an international award given annually to up to three educators from the United States and six other countries. Congratulations, Chad.
I would like to introduce Ryan Deckert.
Ryan Deckert is an elementary math specialist at Riverbend. He was a state finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Congratulations, Ryan.
I'd like to ask Sandy Collins to please join us. Sandy? Sandy Collins is Parkway's Coordinator of Fine Arts, and she was selected as the 2013 Supervision and Administration Award winner by the Missouri Art Education Association. The award recognizes exemplary contributions and service within the Supervision and Administration Division. Thank you, Sandy, and congratulations.
I would like to invite Dr. Greg Bergner to come forward.
Dr. Bergner is the Assistant Principal at Central Middle. He has been chosen as the St. Louis Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year by the St. Louis Association of Secondary School Principals. Congratulations.
Now, I'd like to ask Jennifer Forrest James to please come forward. Jennifer is a theater teacher at South High. She was awarded the Missouri State High School Activities Association Outstanding Speech, Debate, and Theater Educator Award. The award is given to the teacher that Michu feels has given outstanding service and devotion to speech, debate, and the theater programs in the state of Missouri. Congratulations.
Our next award recipient was not able to be here this evening, but we would still like to recognize Michael Hackmeister from South High School, who was selected as a diamond coach in the National Forensic League.
I'd like to ask Debbie DeFani, Kristin Razika, and Deanna Murell to please join us. And I think Debbie DeFani, the instructional coach at West Middle, was unable to attend tonight. But Debbie, along with Kristin and Deanna, the tech specialist at West Middle, and Christine Razika, the library media specialist, received a $10,000 Gold Star Grant from Emerson that will fund new video space for students. The grant will allow the school to purchase video cameras and accessories and a computer for video editing. West Middle will also receive a $5,000 grant. Congratulations to this team of West Middle educators. Thank you very much.
I would like to invite Peggy Plachet to come forward.
Peggy is a music teacher at Henry Elementary School, and she was selected as the West News Magazine Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Peggy.
My own Jenny. Next, please welcome Mike Gahn, Director of Athletics and Activities, to join us at the podium to introduce our state sports champions.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education and Dr. Marty, it's my privilege to introduce our state champions for the 2012-2013 school year. As I call your names, would you please come forward? In men's swimming, from Central, senior Nick Orf. Nick is a two-time state champion in the 200 IM. He's a three-time All-Metro selection, Olympic Trials qualifier, and will be swimming at the University of Minnesota next year. Nick also has a 3.9 GPA. Congratulations. Also from Central are 200 medley and 400 freestyle relay state champions. Included with Nick is senior Brandon Weisman. Brandon will be swimming at Rala next year. In juniors, Zach Rogers and Riley Brown. These guys have a 3.6 GPA and coached by Kevin Fulber. In women's swimming, from North, senior Heather Lundstrom. Heather is a state champion in two events this year, the 100 Fly and the 500 Free. She's a three-time state champion in the 100 Fly and holds a state record in that event. She set the 500 Free state record this year. Heather is the Post-Dispatch Swimmer of the Year. She's an Olympic Trials qualifier, and she's the Suburban Journal Female Athlete of the Year. She will be swimming for the University of Tennessee next year, coached by Bart Prosser. From West, in ladies' swimming, our 200 medley relay team. Freshman Caroline Bias. Sophomore Natalie Folkins. Freshman Carolyn Camire. And freshman Kristin Peterson. We look forward to watching these ladies swim for a few years. These girls have a 3.95 GPA for their team. And they are coached by Allison Zeller. From North, in ladies' track, who cannot be with us tonight, she's our state champion in the high jump, senior Amber Alexander. She jumped five foot six at the state meet to win the event. At the district meet, she jumped five feet eight and a quarter inches to set the new school record at North High. Amber also holds a school record in the triple jump. She's a three-sport letterwoman in volleyball, basketball, and track. Amber will be attending McKendry University next year and plans to play basketball. She's coached by Carla Hurtline. Not only are we proud of our student athletes for being state champions, but we're proud of them for being great leaders in their schools. Good luck to our seniors next year in college, and we look forward to watching our underclass athletes compete. I would also like to recognize their parents that are with us tonight. Would you please stand? Thanks for all your support and encouragement. It really makes all the difference. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We're going to take a brief break now. We are going to start back up with 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. There is one addition to 10.02 personnel items. 5.0 citizen statements, tonight we have none. 6.0 call for executive session, none tonight. 7.0 approval of the agenda for June 12, 2013. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries 7-0. Resolutions, tonight there are none. We're just going right through this, aren't we? 9.0 communications, I'd like to call on Desi Kirchhafer to introduce us to some new Parkway administrators. Lisa, I'd like to call on Lisa, Dr. Meredith.
Good evening. I am excited to introduce three new members of the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Team. I'd like to start with Bill Bass.
So we are excited to have Bill as a member of TLA. He will serve as an Innovation Coordinator at Instructional Technology, Information, and Library Media. So yes, he will be very busy and be all over the place. Bill started his career in Parkway in 2007 as a Tennole Integration Specialist. He continued that until 2012 when he became an instructional coordinator at St. Bill. He holds a Master's Degree in Education and Instructional Technology at Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville, and a Bachelor's Degree in English and Foreign Language. We are excited that Bill will be a charterer with Tom Silverona and Jennifer Sandhill on our innovation team as well as can think about how we support the energy in the market. So follow Bill. Next, I'd like to invite Jenny Rock to come down.
Jennifer has been selected as the High School Interdisciplinary Coordinator for Science, Technology, Math, Math, Engineering, Evernote, STEM. She has been a science teacher at Central High since nineteen ninety-one.
She has been a science teacher at Central High since 2008. In 2012, she received a National Board Certification in Adolescent and Young Adult Science Chemistry. She holds a Master's Degree in Secondary Education from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And a Bachelor's Degree in Chemistry Education from Western Illinois University. We are excited to have Jennifer help us figure out the true interconnections between science, mathematics, and engineering. We know that she will also be working very closely with the Innovation Team as we begin to study in more depth STEM and how it will be applied in Parkway. Welcome to TLA.
Courtney has been selected as our Middle School Interdisciplinary Coordinator for English Language Arts and Social Studies. She came to Parkway in 1998 as an English Language Arts Teacher. Probably wasn't called that then, it was called a Communication Arts Teacher, at South High. Until 2012, when she became an Instructional Coach at Central Middle. She holds a Master's Degree in Education from Maryville University. And a Bachelor's Degree in Secondary English Education from the University of Missouri-Columbia. We are very excited for Courtney to work with the interdisciplinary work of literacy and how it transcends all content areas and support all teachers with that transfer. As well as serve a critical role of helping us ensure that we have tight vertical alignment between our elementary programs, our middle school programs, and our high school programs. Courtney, along with our other interdisciplinary coordinator Becky Litherland at the middle school level, will have a key role with that vertical alignment. And we're excited to have you as a member of TLA. And Dr. Watson.
Thank you, Dr. Meredith. Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing two members of the Student Services Team. Two new members of the Student Services Team. First, Erin Schulte. Erin is the Coordinator of Guidance, Counseling, and Character Education. Erin joins the Student Services Team from Parkway North High School, where she has served as the Guidance Counselor since 2010. Previous to that, she was a counselor in the Lindbergh School District. Erin has a Bachelor's Degree from Marquette University, a Master's Degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And she is working on her PhD at the University of Missouri-St. Louis in Psychology with the emphasis in character education. She is going to add a lot to our district in this role and to the Student Services Team. And we look forward to her skill set joining us as an administrator in Parkway.
She told us we'd be speaking tonight, so I guess she's going to make us do that. I just wanna say that I am honored to work in a district that has this position. I was so happy as a Guidance Counselor in this district when I even saw the name of the position come across my desk. For me, character education is dedicating a large portion of my life to the study of it. And the more I get into it, the more I know our kids need it, our kids are gonna benefit from it. Just not only in the kind of people we produce as moral human beings, but also their education, I think, will be enhanced by that part. And I think also our Guidance Counselors are going to feel the value of their job. And they're going to also be able to serve our students in a better capacity. So thank you all for just having this position and allowing me to work in a district that values kids so much.
And next, I'd like to introduce you to Alyssa Kratz. Alyssa joins us as the Coordinator of Special Services. And Alyssa has been with the Parkway Team since 2007 as the School Psychologist. She has a Master's Degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And a, I have that backwards. A Master's Degree from Southern Illinois University and a Bachelor's Degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And during her time in Parkway, she has streamlined our Section 504 process and had lots of impact in work with our parents and our community in this role. She will be a great asset as an administrator in joining the Student Services Team. Please join me in welcoming, I can't talk tonight. Please join me in welcoming Alyssa.
I'm eager to take on this new role in Parkway. I've really enjoyed all seven years that I've spent in Parkway. The greatest joy I get out of my position is working with families, working with children, and helping students to achieve their potential regardless of their special needs. I'm committed to continuing to help all of our schools and our special education staff meet the unique needs that all of our students have and all of their abilities. Thank you.
We're done? Okay, great. Thanks, welcome everybody. We're glad you can join us and we look forward to working with you all. We're gonna move on to 9.02, Calendar of Meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, August 7, 2013, at Central Middle School at 7:30 PM. Now we move on to Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? Chris.
I'd just like to say what a joy it was to go around with Dr. Marty and Desi and a couple of other board members to visit summer schools on the second day of summer school. And what really blew me away was how engaged the kids were even on the second day. And then we were up at Maryville too for the college readiness course there. And maybe a lot of kids didn't know what they were gonna get into, but you could tell they were involved and looking forward to a semi-college experience. It was wonderful to see how the district was moving ahead and didn't even need us.
Yes, I was with Chris on that trip. And I just thought, I really could've used that college prep thing myself. It's like, wow, you actually think about college before you leave high school.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Monday, I paid an impromptu visit to Oak Brook because I heard through the grapevine that they had 540 students in summer school there. So I just had to see the building with that many kids. Your assistant showed me around and Mr. Hilton seemed to be a little bit dancing around, but was handling it. And he showed me several classrooms that had 30 or more students. And everything seemed to be going outstanding, so maybe we can rethink this whole class. No, he didn't wanna go there either.
I was lucky enough to join Dr. Watson and a few other Parkway employees the other night to hear Dr. Mark Lamont Hill at the History Museum. Parkway and Rockwood partnered to bring him in and speak to educators. The room was full, he gave a great talk, he was really inspiring. And I've always admired him when I've seen little snippets of his work on television. It was really great to hear him in person. I think he really brought forth some new ideas for a lot of our teachers to take into their classrooms next fall.
And I just wanted to mention that I had a great time at the Parkway Alumni Association. Golf outing, was able to release a number of golf balls to the wild. But it's great to have such a strong alumni association. I think that's really, really important to the district and the community.
Okay, we're gonna move along then. Thank you. 10.0 Action Items. You all are very lucky, we used to read these individually. We don't do that anymore, there are 35 of them, so you can thank us all later. May I have a motion? Is there anything that needs to be polled? Anybody have any questions? Okay, then may I have a motion and a second to approve the action items?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Now we're on to action items. 11.01, Approval of the 2013-14 Budget. Mr. Mark Stockwell. I see you're bringing your computer. You gonna share a little bit of information with us?
Basically, the budget looks exactly like it did last meeting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or if you'd like me to go through the presentation again, I'd be happy to do that, but...
Mark, I think we could give the presentation by now.
Great.
Couple of lines, go like this.
I still get paid tonight, right?
So I think we're just gonna skip right on to the question part. Anybody have any questions? I think we're gonna skip right on to the voting part.
Great.
May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the 2013-2014 expenditure budget as presented by the administration in the amount of $238,645,636, with $85,223,892 to be expended from the General Fund. $134,287,570 from the Special Revenue Fund. $4,050,209 from the Capital Project Fund. And $15,083,965 from the Debt Service Fund. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mark, I wanna thank you for all of your hard work last year and this year in bringing our budget in line. Couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you very much. There was a lot of people.
Thank you for making it understandable. Have we ever had an applause?
For the budget?
It's kinda weird.
I think the greatest thing about it is that all the forecasts that you made with last year's reductions are really coming in. And it's something that I think we're all really relieved and happy to see.
Well, and I know you all know this, but I mean, none of this would've happened if you hadn't all decided we need to fix this very quickly. So I really appreciate your support in all of this, so thank you.
Thanks.
Help yourself to the pink cookies.
I could just comment. I think one of the most important things that Mark and so many others have done is I think we have really started to discipline ourselves about the budget. And we'll continue to do that. I think it's, you know, it's not over, but it's something we're just gonna continually have to do. And Mark is a bear on that, but we all have some responsibilities, certainly from the Board to the district administration, to everybody that administers resources in the district.
Thanks. We're gonna move on now to 11.02, Approval of Parkway's Comprehensive Assessment Plan for 2013-2014. I'd like to call on Kevin Beckner, Coordinator of Student Assessment. I think, Kevin, we usually do this a little bit later on into the year.
We do.
And we're gonna do it early tonight in preparation for the student assessment.
Typically, we've done it in coordination with the Data and Achievement Report in October. By moving it to June, we have the opportunity to get your approval prior to any of the assessments being given. Which seems to make some sense, we should get approval prior to giving them. There are a few other changes from previous years. I know I read through Dr. Collins' Comprehensive Assessment Plan in her notes when she had it approved. One of the things that she noted in there was the goal was to move the timeline up. And here we are, moving the timeline up, both of the planning, of the whole process, and of the actual approval, so that we can have it make a little more sense and fit within the scope of the school year.
Okay.
Okay? I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
We all enjoyed listening to you at our retreat.
Thank you.
And it looks like we're moving in the right direction. Bruce?
Yeah, I had Sandy's, or the report from last year, and I had numerous stickies on that. But in deference to my fellow board members, I did not bring those with me. But we can discuss them out on the trails in the park sometime.
That sounds great. We'll plan on that.
Does anybody else have any questions for Kevin? About the assessment plan? Oh, right. This is gonna be one of our quickest board meetings ever. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the 2013-2014 Comprehensive Assessment Plan is presented in the June 12, 2013 Board Material.
So moved, with pleasure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries 7-0. Good luck. 12.0, We have no reports tonight. We have no work session 13.0. We have no policy review. We are just really slacking. No special meeting. Let's see, what we do have. Let's see, may I have a motion and a second to call for an executive session on August 7, 2013. At 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering: 1. Illegal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys. 610.021.1. 2. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded. 3. Preparations on behalf of the district or its representative for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product. And 4. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Roll call? It says that right there? Go ahead. Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Aye.
Mrs. Moterman?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. 17.0, Recession. 18.0, Closed Meeting. We don't need to go back into closed. 19.0, May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned.